On air. And record. Okay, so that's what it's supposed to look like. When it's. You take a picture because. This way, I know it's right. So now we're on. So when Sean comes in.
Yes.
I was gonna give this to him. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Do I do, can I, can do that, should I do it during the meeting, before the meeting?
As soon as he comes in, you can.
Okay. I just want, um.
I don't think they have to be too formal about that just.
It's just his escrow.
Do you know Kurt's coming? Kurt comes in.
I'm not sure.
I hope so. Oh, you're saying, uh, the collateral, this Hinchin thing is over.
Yeah. Hi, Anne.
Hello.
Hello. I have the recording going and the wa- and the livestream going, just so you know.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it off if you say anything. Of course.
Be sure you sit on the girl's side.
On the what?
The girl's side.
You know, thank you for saying that. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Because I thought, you know, let's not do this anymore. And then I would look over there. Shall I sit over there?
You can if you want to, I guess. And then maybe Fred will go over there or something, mix it up a little.
Would that be all right?
It's fine with me, yeah.
I'm gonna do it. We'll just take the, what is the? Did we really need to bring all this stuff?
I brought most of it, I guess, but just. I figured if I didn't bring it.
You wouldn't need it.
I would need it. You have to look something up, so.
I, I recopied the, um. If, I think you'll see if you go on the next page for Five Oak Street, um, the application for the ZBA meeting. On five twenty-five.
Okay.
So that. You would have the variances that he's seeking.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
Cause that, that didn't change at the last meeting, it was still the same.
Right.
Right. Okay, so this is what we got from you already. That decision. Draft.
Yep, the draft resolution, yeah?
Yeah.
Hi, Ben.
Hello.
I think you've been moved over here or something.
Got it.
You have an easy escape in there. Hi, Dave.
Hello.
Ian.
Good day.
Ian.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Livestream is on and recording is on, just so you know.
Very good. This Emerson thing is just here from something else?
It's here for, I think, tomorrow night's, uh, polling joint, so we can mention.
I'm gonna leave you.
Hello, Ian, here Kurt.
How are you?
Hi, David.
Great.
Michael, how are you?
Hi, how are you? Is this mine?
Maybe this, maybe.
You wanna sit over here? This, what is this?
Uh, easy.
Tom's.
Oh, he's, remember him?
Yes.
I don't think Fred's even.
I don't think I've met him yet.
He's been off on fishing trips in the Catskills. He takes people on fishing.
I think we should start having our meetings up there.
I was gonna say, why aren't we on one?
Yeah, I mean, why let, why have I missed these meetings? We had all.
Said he was coming tonight, so.
Yeah.
Oh, here's Kurt.
Thank you.
Hi, Kurt.
How you doing?
See you again.
Mr. Kurt, report your chair out just for tonight.
Well, thanks.
Is Sean gonna be here tonight?
No.
Oh, can I give this to you?
Uh-oh.
Um, I emailed him.
Yes.
So he'll have this, but it's just escrow.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
I saw you about three days in a row in the Quick Stop, and he said he was coming, I guess.
He, I, I heard, I went in to get my haircut today. And the guy in there said he had a last minute chance to get away for the rest of the week, so.
Oh, all right.
He went.
Okay.
On the fishing trip.
Yeah.
Wrong with this picture.
I get a whole different view sitting in here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm surprised to see you over here.
Well, it was the chairman's suggestion.
Shaking it up a little.
Mixing it up.
Yeah.
Nicholas usually sit over there.
I'm usually on that side somewhere.
Yet this is missing from there, so there's.
Ah.
Seat missing.
So there's a chair.
I don't think we're, any of us are that rigid though, right? Doesn't throw us all off. Anne can't make any decisions tonight, no. He's completely promised. Will you be able to still have a quorum?
And Vivian, we have nothing else coming up, nothing?
No. Not for ZBA, as far as next month.
Okay.
So far, I don't know.
Did you hold this with this, or not yet?
That went to planning. So that, they're gonna appear before the planning board, um, and draw.
They've gotta go there before they come to us, I guess, so. Did you get any feedback from Eastern Hay Legal Counsel, if they were gonna be here or not?
No.
I mean, our decision was already.
Yes, I haven't heard.
I, I spoke to them this morning. I, I don't think they're coming, but, um, the size is up, like, yeah.
You, you talked to, uh?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I get a little nervous when he starts calling me, that's, you know, he's found another, uh, problem or something, like with the.
No, he just had some questions about, he just had some questions about what, you know, and I, I, he wanted to know what are. The procedural stuff was tonight, and I explained it, it was just to go through the decision, kinda, and.
When I came in to get my packet, I, I mentioned to Vivian that I've noticed that a number of storage trailers are back on that property.
They come and they go.
They were down to three and now we're down, up to like six or seven.
Yes. Welcome.
Welcome back.
Eating a lot of fish lately?
How are you?
Not eating, catching.
Catching, release?
Catching, yeah.
Did you take shirt by now?
We were switching it up.
Oh, yeah. Do my trips, come back, take care of the shop.
You have a boat, you have a boat up there?
Yeah, I have one of those western, western style drift boats.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so it's a lot of fun.
What are you catching up there?
Trout.
Trout, yeah.
So it's all beautiful, the national park area, it's gorgeous, so.
There you go.
In Delaware River system, uh, up by Hancock Deposit, Binghamton area.
Oh, there?
About Route seventeen, yeah.
That's way out.
About two hours.
Yeah, oh, I didn't realize, I was thinking north.
It's seven o'clock.
It's seven o'clock, all right. So, welcome to the Sony Board of Appeals meeting, we have another overflow crowd.
Another one. We should have popcorn, David.
Yeah, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, uh, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I plus do an extra ten or custom? Are you?
Go call?
Yeah, you wanna do the, uh?
Michael Kuepp.
Here.
Freddie DeVito.
Here.
And Hartman.
Yeah.
Nicholas Boralee.
Here.
And Tom Zarecki.
Give you my blue one here, Tom.
All right, we're all here. First thing we should do is minutes on the, is it just the last?
Two, two.
Um, uh, May eleventh and May twenty-fifth.
May eleventh and, uh, you have, uh, everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes, the last. Two meetings.
Yes.
Does anybody have any, uh, corrections, alterations, omissions, anything? In that case, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the, uh, was it May eleventh?
May eleventh.
May eleventh meeting.
And the twenty-fifth.
Well, we're gonna do.
Oh, separate.
Yeah, uh, so for May eleventh, uh, I make a motion, we approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, uh, so for May twenty-second.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, um, anybody have any alterations, changes, additions? Anything for the me, uh, minutes for that, May twenty-fifth? All right, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for May twenty-fifth. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, right, all right, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, uh, so first thing we're gonna do is try to wrap up the Hinchin Dairy, Eastern Hay. And, uh, I make a motion that we go into executive session, uh, for some legal advice and discuss, uh, potential, uh, lawsuits, things.
You're gonna close the, close the meeting on purpose?
Yeah, yeah, close the meeting and now we go into executive session.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, okay. Take a little trip upstairs.
Do you, do you want us to just step outside, is it easier?
Step outside, you stay here.
You guys wanna step out?
That's fine.
All right.
Turn off the recording.
I don't know if I can start that.
Oh, geez.
Just stopping.
You can stay.
Well, we're going upstairs. Upstairs we go, so make us feel comfortable, we'll try it.
Are we on then, this whole time?
Yep.
Technology, technology has undone us here.
A few things I wanna say.
Sorry not to be too long.
Get your exercise, right?
So this'll get you the variances, this is just for, um.
This is Oak Street.
Oak Street.
Yeah.
And so this is, how many variants do you have to do for that one?
Well, it's a bunch for the urban regulations.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's like five.
Okay.
Cause they're. They look good on paper, but they're impossible to apply in real life.
Well, I realize that, yeah, I remember that, well, it, it, first of all, like, the AG market site should not have been an urban rig site, cause it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I get what the urban rigs are for, and they're, they're for like every other building in town except for the one that you worked on.
And the thing is, it's just that. I mean, those things were done in ninety-four, and they're good guidelines, they're really good guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just like, you have to just kind of apply them to real life conditions.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Which is fine, as long as you're able to do this and get a variance when it makes sense, which it does, I guess, it's just an exercise.
It is, it is, but. So we'll see. Get things going, get things moving happening.
What's the status on the AG project?
We're trying to get the foundation permit for the front building. So hopefully that'll come soon, so we can get that going, get that up and running.
Yeah.
So. Just construction prices right now, we're just.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, 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 maybe building a garage for my house. And, you know, that was, I went through, been working on it for a long time, went through all these different plans, and I finally came back and I actually cut it down in size a little bit. The price went up, it's higher than it was when it was a little bit bigger.
Right.
I'm like, damn it. Can I alter the old price?
Well, and the hard thing is, is you don't wanna, I mean, I'm sure you have, there's a budget that you wanna spend on something, but it's like, you don't wanna, you know, get it down to a size that you're gonna regret down the road.
Yeah, no, I mean, where do, actually, the, the shrinking ended up being better, I'm much happier with the finished product, I think, as a result. I didn't, I was, you know, doing it all kind of myself, and so I was able to, it, it makes more sense.
Okay, all right, well, that works.
In the smaller size.
Gave you some time to kind of, you know, look at it and review, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd hope things stabilize a little bit, but it's just.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I have a couple of clients that are residential clients, they're just, they're knee deep in the middle of the projects and just the numbers just keep going up.
Oh, God, yeah.
Contractors can't eat the extra price.
No.
But it's like you've committed and your house is tore apart, it's like you have no choice, but you're spending a lot more than you had anticipated.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that's, I don't know how much I can, um, I'm using a, a company for most of the garage and building a little piece myself. The foundation is, the, I'm doing a slab, and, uh, I got a price a while back. Haven't gotten it, I keep on handling it for an update and use. And it took me such a long time that he was kind of way off, he goes, I'm probably talking September, October, that's when I talked to him a month ago. And I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, I was like, well, I could probably get you in sooner, but probably people are probably dropping out because I can't afford it anymore.
Exactly.
So I, but now I need another, I need his price again to see if I'm, if he's gonna kill me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, the labor numbers, I don't think are wildly variable, it's just the, the material.
Yeah, so that shouldn't make too much of a difference, I would think, for foundation, right, this is concrete.
You would think, yes, but.
Rebar maybe.
Yeah.
That might be a little extra.
Who knows?
Fuel costs for, I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're jacking the price and all that.
Well, yeah, all that.
Smell mixers.
I'm just waiting for, I mean, windows are horrible, trying to get windows.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm actually trying to do some on my own house, just a couple of windows, and originally, they told me thirty-six weeks. Originally, we got it down to twenty-four weeks, but still, it's like, really?
Wow.
Buy them that for an advance, so.
Now, are they just understaffed or overbooked, is this, it's been so much project, that kind of project work is what's been happening.
With that, we've been, we're hearing supposedly, there was a big fire in Houston. At one of the plants that makes a lot of the polymers or whatever it is for the paint in the windows.
Oh.
For the finishes in the windows.
Fire?
Yeah.
Or a freeze?
Something.
It was, yeah, I was gonna say, a lot lost that went wrong with that Texas freeze a year ago.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it was that, but something with a big plant down there, they had all kinds of problems, that they're still trying to catch up with.
All right, yeah.
So.
Whether, yeah, I don't know, cause that's my business that I'm into, man, insurance.
Ah, okay.
So I hear about big fires usually, so I'm not.
Okay, so maybe, maybe it was the freeze.
I think it's Formosa Plastic, which is a big one, and I know they had some Texas freeze stuff, that, that, that affected supply chains.
Oh, sure.
Like, you can't even, you, you, things you're just scratching your head over.
And a lot of it is just little things.
Yeah.
But if, you can't finish a project.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Yeah, that's a talk about it, so. We'll see if we can get through. I don't know. So you're, are you a neighbor of one of these projects, or you're?
I, I'm a neighbor of the restaurant.
Ah, okay.
Which, that's what got me kind of coming to meetings finally, cause I missed the boat on the original one, I think. And, uh, I wish I could've, I wish I was, you know, more on it, I would've argued loudly against just the size of it to start with, I think, I, I think that was a mistake to allow something that's bigger than a lot that it's on. I know you were involved in the architectural side of it, and, um, I'm not blaming the project owner, you know, obviously they wanna do what they wanna do.
Yeah.
I think the village to accept a, uh, an arrangement of shuttling cars, shuttling people to the village and back. That doesn't make sense. That aside, though, what really got me into it was, I live next door, next door, so they own the house.
Okay.
That dark gray, black, black house, that's my house, so. And so the house next door, which they also own, of course, um, you know, which I hadn't never into, it, the only meeting I ever went to, early on, I got the notice, which I don't know if I missed the notice on another meeting, but. I got the notice on the zoning board, um, meeting about the restaurant, and there were only variances they were looking for, that was parking space size.
Yes.
Like, area, you know, those typical ma- amount of the area built on, some of these things like that, we're all, maybe been set back in things.
Right.
All of it was just like, it made sense to give them variances on all those things, and I, by then, the West Royal Barn, as far as the size of the thing went, I had no idea about that part. But the, I only really was focused on the house next door, so make sure they weren't gonna be.
Right.
Spending this on the house, and as far as I could tell, they weren't, and they weren't, and they aren't, I mean, according to the plans. However, the generator was delivered today, and, uh, there's a generator pad and a flagpole that sits on the property of.
Yep.
The house next door, doesn't belong there, and not only that, would really, I mean, before they even installed any of that stuff, they cut down all the trees and immediately exposed my backyard.
Right, so you see twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and the intersections, like, right there, so it used to be such a buffer, there was two big trees that were back there, three big trees, there's two big pines and a maple tree up by the road. Took them all down. So I put up a fence, helps a little bit.
Yeah.
Let's not, no, we're in the same thing. That's my big motivation, as far as the, them not doing the whole finish, I get the village's position, and I agree with them that they should've done what they said they were gonna do. But, uh, that's really not even my concern, like, whatever.
Well, the thing, and, I mean, the thing is, we worked really hard with the village.
I know you did, yeah.
To try to get a building that was appropriate and looked good and things, and then, you know, this other stuff appeared.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, well, you were on, cause that, that was the part of the zoning board, meaning of the appeals, which, really, the aesthetics of the building weren't part of the, uh, but. Obviously, it was a big motivating factor.
Yeah.
The zoning board and the planning board and approving everything, was that.
Well, I think, it was all part and parcel of the party, so, you know, you look at these little pieces, but they all gel together, it's like, okay, here's the building we're gonna get.
Right, right. So that, yeah, and so, so right now, of course, that's just sitting in, well, I guess they hired somebody, yeah.
And that's, that's the sad part is, is that it's just sitting there. I mean.
Yeah.
If they follow a plan, it'd be open right now, we'd be on dinner right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Right.
I, I, that, that part just, I don't get.
And then my issue with the whole, what's going on in the property next door is not even on the table yet.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I keep on, and I'm just being sure. There's, there's a process here, I mean, I don't know, I feel like, can we, can't we be more, I mean, I don't know if this, if, uh, if the owner, at this point, you should understand that. They're gonna hold their ground on things, come out and say, don't install this generator, it's not gonna be approved, it better not be approved.
Well, yeah, well, listen.
There's no reason to approve it.
I mean, honestly, I wish the village had taken a stronger position as the, I mean.
As it happened.
We won't pass that bill every single day.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, handing them a piece of paper that says, please stop work, is not a strong enough message.
That's, and that's, that's my opinion, and I, like I say, on my particular things, I, that would, that's what I said, I said, you see it there, you know what it is.
It's not hidden in the woods somewhere.
Yeah, I say, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to go up there and tell them, listen, don't do this. You gotta move it, because it's not gonna happen, you, you're gonna, you need to apply for approval, and tell them what they need to do if they wanna get it approved, and also tell them you're not gonna get it approved, fix it now.
But if you need to send the sheriff there at some point, then you need to send the sheriff there, you know?
Yeah. So, but.
I mean, that's what they do elsewhere, I don't, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
You know, we're all looking at it as it happens.
Yep.
You know, and the things that they've changed, they haven't done for cost savings, cause that roof that they put on there.
That's a crazy roof.
It's way more expensive than the roof that we.
I'm sure it is, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, you know, it's, it's not that issue.
I saw them start to put that roof on, and I thought, this isn't gonna go over well.
But, but it, it took them two weeks or plus to finish it, so it's like.
Yeah.
All that time.
Yeah, it took them longer than two.
Well, totally, it was longer than that.
That was a lot of work.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, that was, and, you know, their, their excuses for why they did it are silly, but, I mean, they were just saying that they had to do it because of structural reasons, it's just a roof. Don't tell me you can't put a shingle roof on there.
Right, right.
And then they tried to argue that, uh, cause the, the plans showed, um, I think it said specifically fiberglass architectural shingles, right? You wrote that, probably.
Yep.
And they're arguing that, you know, those, that faux terracotta is actually a glass reinforced plastic product, so therefore it's fiberglass.
Talk about grasping at straws.
I know, and it's not like there's some legal definition of architectural shingle, but everybody knows what architectural shingle means.
Right.
Who, who puts, who puts roofs up, but they said, oh, no, in fact, and they had signed, you know, they got a letter from, um, some PE, you know, who's willing to sign off on that, you know, probably for two hundred fifty bucks and. Say, sure, that's an architectural fiberglass shingle, that was someone. Therefore, and there's nothing that said it was gonna be black, there's, no, no reference to the color.
We showed color gridoes over and over and over.
Yeah.
Had posted on the fence on the building for, or around the property for months.
Oh, it's nuts, so I don't, I'm, I'm really interested to see, um, you know, what comes of that, you know, what, what an architectural review is going to entail, they're gonna come back and look at it and try to make it somehow fit, they're trying to painting the roof, which to me sounds insane. I think I'd leave, rather they don't paint the roof, that sounds like it's a disaster, yeah.
Well, they've had a pro, they, they've found a product that will, is for that, basically.
Yeah.
And it will hold, and.
Okay.
So, the thing is, they should probably just do a mock-up of it and just have it painted and say, is this what we want?
Yeah, yeah.
But the thing is, it was just like a pissing man, you know, like, for that.
Yeah.
It was just like, come to the table, work out a result and say, let's do A, B, C, D, and just get it done, cause it is what it is at this point.
Yeah.
So.
I think I said that at one of the meetings.
Like, now we're just sitting there, we're just, you know, two foot tall grass, sitting there in an unfinished thing, at the entrance of the mi- village.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, let's get it done, let's get it done, try to get it closer to where it should be, and call it a day.
Yep.
I mean, I understand now that it's in your backyard, literally, so. I mean, I understand now that it's in your backyard, literally, so, but.
Again, I don't, it's the size of the building is the problem, the look of the building is, you know, it's, I don't, it doesn't look right either, but it doesn't, I don't, I don't think it's offensive, I just don't think it fits.
It just could be better.
Yeah, it could be better, and also, by the way, painting the black terracottish tiles, I don't know what that's gonna look like, that sounds weird to me. It's like, as long as they got barrel tiles, you should leave them that color. But whatever, we'll, we'll figure out what they do, but I'm, as I said, I am, what I really want is that the house next door continues to look like a house next door and not houses on the property of a restaurant.
Right, right.
And then I don't have to stare at, which I am today.
Right.
A generator, which is as big of a.
Yeah, and you've done a lot of work on your house, and it looks really nice, so it's like.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
I should have bought that house, that Jean Bardot, who lived there forever, if you're from the town or not, but yeah, so she lived there forever, and great neighbor, and you know, we had really good relationship. So she died, and they sold it, and my wife said, "You know, we should, uh, buy it," and I'm like, "I don't want anything to do with buying houses, I really don't want that," you know, it's just one, it went for under three hundred thousand bucks. It was like two ninety.
And it's two apartments, right?
Yeah, it's two apartments, but.
And it's nice, I was, I went to the estate sale, I was inside there, and it's like.
Oh, this isn't that bad, yeah. It's really nice, I'd seen the upstairs apartment, I'd seen Jean's house when she lived there, of course, and, um, and the upstairs apartment was really nice, and, um, but anyway, it was all nice, but I, I wanted nothing to do with it, then, of course, it went so cheap, Liflin bought it, uh, on the cheap, and then he flipped it to these guys, but, um, it's like, oh, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, right?
Right.
If we had owned the damn thing, we would have this property, a nice rental property.
Correct.
And, and I could have absolutely controlled what happened in the yard, would have put up an eight-foot fence between the houses.
But hindsight again, it was, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, too bad.
Oh, well.
They're going through grief now, I got a call from Diana about, um, because they, their upstairs tenant has disappeared.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they.
Oh.
I got it, we got a call at our house from, and I don't even know the guy, I never really met him, and I don't, wouldn't be able, we're working at the fantastic street. And we got a call from, uh, some guy in Chicago, just, he's just looking up addresses and pawling and people who might know him, because he's trying to get ahold of this guy, because I can't find him, he's disappeared. And, uh, and he's still missing, I think he turned up in Chicago, he has some problems, I guess, but he's.
Okay.
He's apparently trashy.
Oh, really?
And now she's trying to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, guys, the band didn't show up to every Chinese.
What kind of place is this?
There's nothing to talk about, either.
Alright, we're back, and I make a motion to reopen the, uh, the meeting.
I'll click on that.
Oh, a favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. Uh, I'd just like to say before we start that when we were upstairs, we did not pass any resolutions or do anything untoward, so. So, uh, we are going to, uh, just go back to discuss, discussing Eastern Hay Hinchin Dairy, and we have a, uh, draft decision on that, and, uh, this, everyone, has everyone had a chance to look at the, uh, decision? We made an informal, uh, decis- decision at their last meeting, our May meeting, but now we want to finalize everything and kind of end that whole business, so. Anyone have any, anything I'd like to say on this, any questions or comments or anything, you know?
I read through the whole thing, Michael, and, uh, obviously, this is David's legal interpretation of our discussion, uh, last month, at our last meeting, uh, and about the issues that we all saw, uh, getting, uh, uh, the issues that we saw that helped us to get to certain decision points. Uh, agricultural products aren't grown or produced on the property there, uh, most of the products are from third-party vendors, the majority of the hay isn't grown on the land or on, on land that's rented by them, um. Uh, it also, we felt, didn't qualify as a farm operation, and, and we all agreed with the Agon Markets interpretation, the State Agon Markets Division, their interpretation as well, that, uh, this property was not an agricultural site, um, so I think that, uh, that David did a very good, uh, good job of putting this in legal terms, what we all were discussing, uh, at the last meeting, so I think it's pretty accurate myself.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Nicholas, yeah, it, um, I mean, if you look at what's going on there, um, it, it, it doesn't, it's not a, it's not a farm operation, it's not really, uh, land that's been used in agriculture production, I mean, to be considered, uh, by agriculture and markets, to be, uh, to be a farm operation, they, they need to have, what is it, seven acres, I think, and they only have just over five acres, so even if they were doing something more agricultural, they, they don't have enough acres.
Right.
Well, they could qualify with the least property.
With the least, if you threw in the least property.
And they throw, so they did, that would, I, I don't think that alone would be a criteria you, you would wanna apply, but, um, you know.
Yeah, it's, um, but they're not growing anything there, they're not, uh, there are no cows there, there are no, there's nothing, it's all.
It's not a livestock, they're running.
Yeah, and all the items that they cited in the code, uh, would be completely a different story if it was agriculture, but it, it's not. It doesn't meet the, uh, the generally accepted idea of what agriculture is, uh.
And the bottom line is, the state rendered a decision as well.
Yeah, and, and they, it was appealed by Eastern Hay Hinchin, and came, the state came back with the same answer. It's, uh, it's, it's not, uh, not agriculture, so, uh, you know, it's, you know, it is. The, uh, you know, it's, it, it took a while to do this, we didn't, this wasn't rushed, uh, the village took their time with this. We didn't rush them with anything, and, uh, they got to, Eastern Hay got to, uh, appeal, and they were turned down again, so, um, they've had their chance, and, uh, so I, I, I agree with this decision that it's not agriculture, it's not a farming operation, it's not even close. I mean, some of the things they cited in here about, uh, some of the thing, parts of the code, uh, about things that are supposed to be, uh, inside a, a building, well, if you, if you have a farm, things, farming operation, things that can be outside the building, but it's not, that, uh, a lot of their stuff is outside, stored outside, and that doesn't go against our code. All of the things they cited, the different, uh, parts of the code, it, they fail, it doesn't, doesn't hold up, so, uh, this, uh, so we'll make a motion to, uh.
There is a resolution, there's a proposed resolution that, uh, so you may wanna just read, read that.
Alright, so if we accept the decision, this proposed resolution, uh, which I will read, alright, uh, whereas on or about April seventh, twenty-twenty-two, Hinchin Dairy Incorporated and Eastern Hay Corporation, the applicants submitted an appeal to the Village of Pauling Zoning Board of Appeals, requesting the interpretation and appealing a determination issued by the village clerk on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, asserting that the applicants are in violation of sections ninety-eight, ten, nineteen forty-five, forty-six, and sixty-five of chapter ninety-eight, zoning of the code of the Village of Pauling. Whereas pursuant to New York Village Law, section seven dash seven-one-two A and sections ninety-eight, sixty-seven of the code, the Z B A has jurisdiction to hear and decide appeals from and review any order, requirement, decision, interpretation, or determination made by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of the zoning code of the Village of Pauling. Whereas on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, a duly noticed public hearing was held, and the applicants and members of the public were provided with an opportunity to be heard. Whereas the public hearing was left open until May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, for the additional submission of documents by the applicants and the Z B A's attorney. Whereas at its meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, the Z B A passed a resolution denying the applicant's requested interpretation that it be deemed a farm operation and/or an agricultural use, and a further resolution denying the applicant's request that the notice of violation issued by the village clerk be dismissed. Now therefore, bear resolved that with respect to the applicant's request for interpretation and appeal, the Z B A issues the decision annexed hereto and made a part herof as Exhibit A. The question of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, the zoning, zoning board of appeals voting as follows. Chairman Michael Q?
Aye.
Ann Hardeman?
Aye.
Fred DeVito?
Aye.
Nicholas Vorleaf?
Aye.
Thomas Sarecki?
I will abstain, as I was not in attendance to the previous, uh, meetings.
Alright, so we have four ayes and one abstain. I hereby certify that the above is a true and correct copy of the resolution passed by the Village of Pauling Zoning Board at a meeting held on June twenty-fifth, twenty.
May twenty.
May.
June twenty-fifth.
Fine, oh, I'll say, May.
Yeah.
Oh, yours says June, how strange.
Oh, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Well, it's not the twenty-fifth of June yet.
Yeah.
I did that, I did that, I, because I, I noticed a couple of.
Yeah.
Typos, so I went ahead and changed, you know, the names, and then I assumed you were talking about.
In the resolution.
Yeah, that was from the meeting.
Well, it should be whatever the accurate date is, yeah.
Which is today, right?
Yeah, yeah, oh, oh, yes, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
June twenty.
Twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Alright, alright.
Alright, date, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
And then the date under, on, the date where it says date colon, it should be June twenty-second as well, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. And then just one more on top, um, where it says, "At a meeting."
Oh, I see, good, okay, so, Kavina will figure that you're gonna change all the dates to be appropriate.
Alright.
I think one of the, one of the important things here too, Michael, just to add on, is that we, we've all agreed here that the, although the village hires other people to do inspections for us, who are qualified, certified by the state to do so, that other village employees do have the authority, specifically the clerk, to sign off on those violations.
Yes.
Uh, and that there should be no question moving forward, that the clerk has the authority to sign these resolution, these resolutions and recommendations based on the expertise of people that the village is hiring to do these inspections for us.
Good point, yes, alright. Okay, so.
Alright, so we put that to the resolution.
On the first page, it says, uh, following resolution was proposed by.
By.
Mike?
Yes, proposed by me and.
And second, I, I didn't.
I don't remember whose second it was, last one.
I don't know.
It might have been me.
Yeah.
I'll take the credit, but if somebody else wants to step forward later, because it wasn't me, I, I'll step back.
Oh, here on the recording.
Okay.
Alright, alright. So you just that, that's it?
Our business.
Yep, that's it, we're done, with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, it's got, yeah, and that, it'll file it with the, within five days, it's gotta be provided to the applicant.
Yeah, I'll do it tomorrow.
Five days with clerks.
Alright, okay, so.
Do you get a copy as well?
Yeah, you can send me a copy, yeah. Kurt, I was wondering when you could move up to your chair.
Yeah, really.
We had it embossed, if you look at the back.
It's the most comfortable chair.
Maybe, just to be clear, the, the village clerk, it gets filed with the village clerk.
Oh, okay.
It's very important, within five days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, alright.
Alright, so now, moving on, uh, we have Five Oak Realty LLC, and Kurt Johnson is back with us after an absence of a few months.
Yes.
Okay, alright, Kurt, welcome.
Yes, hi, um, so I think probably, at the last meeting, Sean was here, the, uh, the applicant, so I think he went over most of the issues with you, but I'll just gloss over them quickly. Uh, we have a zero point one-one acre parcel on the corner of Arch Street and Oak Street in the village, in the B-one zone district. Uh, it, it has a existing fourteen hundred and forty square foot, one-story commercial building on it now, and a parking area on Arch Street. What we're proposing to do is, uh, add to the building and add a second story, uh, that would become commercial space on the first floor and one residential apartment, and four residential apartments on the second floor. Uh, strict application of the urban regulations, which do apply to this project, um, presents some issues in terms of the unique character of the site. We need variances for, uh, we're actually making the pre-existing non-conforming site, um, as you apply the urban regulations, bring them closer to conformance with the urban regulations, we can't get there on all issues, so we are bringing the proposed building to, um, Oak Street here. We have to, on this site, since we have two frontages, we have to have a parking on Arch Street where it is currently, but we will be regularizing that and making that neater and more organized with this proposal. Another thing in the urban regulations is that where there's absence of, uh, building along the frontage of the property, that you have a garden wall, it really doesn't work when you have parking there, because it would basically block your parking on there. Um, also, the full build-outs on the street, we need ninety percent, uh, build-out along the street frontage with buildings, um, we can't get that, obviously, we're trying. We have this here along the street frontage on Oak Street, um, we need, we have fifty-two, uh, percent right now with the proposal, we need ninety percent here, obviously. On Arch Street, we have no building frontage, because we can't put the parking there. And the last one would be, um, with the Schedule C bulk regulations, as they have in the B-one district, the lot coverage. So seventy-five percent is allowable, which is about what it is right now, and we're proposing to have eighty-five percent, um, on this site.
Alright, uh, anyone have any questions?
Kurt?
Yeah.
I do have one.
Yeah.
Have you guys looked into, as part of the design, uh, it just seems a little often with projects that are coming across the Z B A the last number of months, there's, oh, there's often a request for increased lot coverage of impermeable surfaces. Uh, have you guys looked into alternatives to impermeable surfaces for the parking area, things that are better at absorbing? Just looking at the property, there's not much room for any absorption.
Right.
As it is, and what, what possibilities have you even considered if you have?
I think a lot of times that the, those impervious, or those pervious surfaces for parking, whatever, become problematic with maintenance, because if you use, uh, sand or whatever, they tend to clog any of the porosity in those materials.
Yeah, there are those, like, open stones where grass is planted in between.
Right.
And things like, I know there's also some products that are an asphalt type of product, but they're also more permeable.
That's the one that has more problems with it.
Does it, okay.
And I think a lot of times with those pavers that they use with the grass, they, a lot of times look pretty unsightly after a while, because you get grass kinda growing up.
You have to kinda mow, mow, mow the parking area.
They work well in the southern climate, where you don't get the heave and the thaw, because if you, anybody has a paver patio, you know, after five years, it starts going like this.
Yeah, it's true.
Um, so down south, they're beautiful, I've seen some beautiful churches with big.
Right.
And it's beautiful, but it's tough up here, um, but it, it is only five spaces, but it's, it's a maintenance issue.
Being in the field that you're in, with your background, Tom, do you know of other solutions in this more northern part?
That's, that's kinda what you mentioned, was it's always a, a back and forth, um, you could, you could have tread marks where just your tires go onto the parking spaces, but again, mud, snow, shoveling, putting gravel down, plows up into the sidewalks, um. Uh, it, it's, it's a tough one, um.
Alright.
Alright, thank you for your input on that as well, Tom.
I thought you were asking him for an opinion about fishing.
No, no, and how do you get that great tan on the back of your neck and ears?
Alright, so, I think you set a record with, with six, uh.
Oh, great.
Variances, I think that, that's a record, uh, but.
Yeah, you get the T-shirt printed.
Yeah, really.
We have to ring the bell.
I went to the ZBA for six variants. I saw, the first variance is the parking location under the urban regulations, and just run over this quickly, it was various result in undesirable change in the character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Under the prior use of the site, an office parking was located in the front along Arch Street, and I think we read this actually last time too, but, yeah, it's, it's a difficult situation because it's an unusual lot, and you don't really have room for parking and to try to do anything with it. I think what's happening here is it's, it's an improvement to what is there. So, you know, there are approximately five spaces, the five proposed, since parking is going to be in the front. Therefore, the continuation of the park is not anticipated to result in undesirable change. Can the benefit be sought by some of the feasible method to provide alternative locations? The parking, entire site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property, the proposed building footprint, it may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking places in the rear. No, throw the whole building off and you'd have to have a driveway going around the back and it would not work. Is the variance substantial? It's not anticipated to be substantial given existing conditions. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions? Parking is located currently in the front, therefore is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Was it self-created? Yes, it's self-created, but there was a pre-existing condition. All right, how does anybody feel about that? Are we okay with this?
It is an unusual property developing, I see that there's some definite concerns, you have two frontages.
Yeah.
I completely see your point about the garden wall being an obstruction to parking spaces, which I think would be an improvement the way you've got them there. One concern that's been brought up in the past was about residences, I think, Fred, you had a concern about that. I remember hearing something about permit parking as a possibility on that one street. Was that something that was mentioned in the last meeting?
The parking, how we've been working with the parking with the planning board is that there's five parking spaces shown, so there's one parking space for each residential unit on there, and those would be for residents only from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM. During the daytime, they could be for either residents or patrons of the commercial space. Any employees or the owner of the commercial space would have to utilize merchant parking.
Merchant parking.
And then there's also on-street parking, and Lou Masella, who was on the, was on the planning board and also the?
Right.
Traffic guy, he said there's very rarely full parking on Arch Street.
Was there any discussion or possibility of permit parking for residents? That residents would be able to park on the street there, having a residential permit because they're occupants?
Well, I think we're providing the parking per se onsite, I mean, they might be, I don't know if they can get merchant parking, merchant parking or not, but I think those are designated merchant parking sites on Arch Street currently.
Okay, so they have to be changed in order for the residents to?
So you give a residential, the residential park at certain times, you said?
Yes, yeah, 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM would be residence only in those five parking spaces onsite. During the day, it's up for grabs.
And who does the enforcement?
I guess onsite, it would be the building owner would have to do the enforcement.
There would be signs, there's cars.
Yes, there's signs on the site plan, yes, correct.
So how did you guys determine to do a five, say, one-bedroom instead of opposing two, two-bedroom? So you would only have, you could use two of those spaces for the commercial at all time?
I think that the commercial wasn't an issue, because we do have ample parking in the area there, and we do have merchant parking that's off-site that they can go to, and, you know, the idea I think in with a downtown development is, a lot of times, you're not going to, theoretically, you're not going to one commercial space, you're parking on the street.
Right.
You might go into McKinney and Dog, get a coffee, you might go into the bookstore, get a book, you know, it's that urban kind of feel, so I think that's the intent of parking on the street for commercial uses. And the owner could not park, or employees could not park on the site either.
And most of the parking in that area is three hours?
Yeah.
Anyone can park for three hours without any problem in anyone's space?
They don't have any, anybody interested or lined up or anything for the?
Not that I know of. I think it's filled and they will come type thing, so.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
How many commercials locations are in that front floor?
Just one. It's about a thousand square feet.
All right. Okay. All right, any other questions or anything?
No. Can that commercial space at any point in time be changed to multiple commercial spaces, or is this going to be just set up for one space?
Yeah, I don't think it's really large enough to have, to break it down anymore. I mean, we're kind of, working with the planning board, we've kind of said, we're assuming it'll be retail, which is a higher parking ratio, but that's kind of where we are.
Okay.
That was the, because you did retail, any like change to something else, another kind of use would require going back to the planning board, because the change of use triggers something.
Yes, and that's something.
All right, if there are no other comments or questions, someone like to make a motion regarding this variance number one, the parking location? All right. Well, I make a motion to grant this variance to the parking location.
And that has to do with the five spaces right in the front there, right, like?
Yeah, parking in the front, in front of the building, yes.
I'll second that motion, Michael.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, number one is passed. Okay, number two, lot coverage, Schedule C. According to Schedule C, a maximum lot coverage of 75% is permitted. The applicant is seeking a lot coverage of 85%. So it's 10% increase. All right, the criteria will result in undesirable change, the increase in lot coverage will be accompanied by improved landscaping and improved building facade. Given that the project uses existing footprint with some expansion, the proposed development is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in character or detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by some of the feasible method? Yes, the applicant could rebuild the existing building with no expansion. Okay. Is the variance substantial? If anybody has a question or anything, just jump in there. The applicant is requesting an increase of 10% from the maximum lot coverage permitted. The requested variance is largely driven by the increase in the building's footprint from the existing 1,440 square foot to 2,770 square foot, or a 92% increase. Given the building's increase, this may be considered substantial. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The answer to the proposed variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district because of the densely developed nature of the area. Was, last one, was this difficulty self-created? Yes, the need for the variance is related to proposed building expansion. Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
No. I have a question for Kurt here before we take this further. Kurt, obviously, the building has a footprint, and there are five spaces which are very likely going to be impermeable, but the other strips of land around that, is that all landscaping, grass, dirt, and those are all permeable surfaces?
This stippled area here is landscaping or grass that's around the building here.
So on those three sides, except for the footprint of the building and the five spaces?
Yeah, there's a planting area here in the front also.
Yeah, I think Sean mentioned that at the last meeting about some kind of plantings and things.
Yes.
Would go there.
And I think the hard part is strict application of the urban regulations where you're required to have, you know, building frontage of 90%, and you have to build along the property line, it kind of leads you into covering the entire site in urban, in the downtown by a building.
And you lose all those parking spaces.
I think a way in the future that would, to adjust that, is have, if we had a municipal parking structure, that could accommodate some of these parking spots.
That would be wonderful.
And our, our meetings here would change a little bit, because we could abide by the code a little easier and have more wiggle room for parking spaces, as that's often our pick-up, is trying to get those spaces as they should be, as we're getting more people and they need to accommodate.
All right, so, so lot coverage. Somebody like to make a motion on this? We discussed it, accept?
I'm okay to make a motion to accept the lot coverage, I just want to be sure that the remaining areas remain as landscaped and completely permeable, that we don't have sidewalks for there and other things going on in the future that?
That's on the site plan, that's?
That we have to make sure.
Being considered by the planning board.
All right, so Nicholas makes a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Second? Seconds, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that, number two is carried. Number three, required minimum setbacks on front, Arch Street, under the urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type one shop front slash mixed-use building diagram, building setbacks are not permitted in the front yard. Okay, so, will the variance result in an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? The proposed development will improve the site's compliance with this requirement from the existing condition, and as such, it is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in character or character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method to provide alternative locations? The entire site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, it may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking spaces in the rear. Is the variance substantial? It's not anticipated to be substantial given the improvement to the existing condition. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? This variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions, given the improvement to the existing condition. Was it self-created? Yes, however, the proposed project is an improvement from the existing conditions. Yes, I mean, I, the building now is old, it's, looks like kind of rundown, it's, something being done to it, it's proposed here would definitely be an improvement, and if you're going to make an improvement, sometimes you've got to, you know, kind of shake things up, and you can't really make an improvement and go by strict following of the code. You've got to make a few alterations here. Does anybody else have any comments or anything on this one? Number three?
If we were to adhere to the building setbacks part of the code, then we'd lose all those five spaces, which I think are important. So I think that this design use of the property is probably the best application for what these, what's wanted and how it's going to work with the parking needs.
I think it's going to anchor that corner a little bit better than it currently does too, and kind of reinforce the street edge with what's being proposed, although it's not perfectly in compliance with the urban regulations, I think it kind of gets closer to that.
Right.
All right, anybody else have anything? Well, I make a motion then that we approve number four, required minimum frontage?
That was number three?
Number three, yeah, number three, I'm moving right along here.
I'll second your motion for variance number three on the building setbacks, Michael.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, number three is passed. Number four, required minimum frontage buildout on Oak Street, urban, this is under the urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type one shop front mixed-use buildings diagram, a minimum of 90% frontage buildout is required. Applicant is providing 52%. Area variance criteria. Will variance result in undesirable change in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? Proposed development will improve the site's compliance with this requirement from the existing conditions. As such, it is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Now, I mean, I think it's definitely going to improve nearby properties by new building there. I mean, look what happened with the place across from the physical therapy when that was redone. It's a much nicer building, bigger building, and it's, it's got a hair salon in there, it's got, it's being used, it's, it's?
The corner of town will become relevant again.
Yes, yeah, it's been just something you would kind of drive by, and now maybe it'll be something that you go to. Hopefully something, there'll be some kind of business in there that you would go to. I mean, you've got the, call it the moose or cool as a moose, or whatever it is down there, maybe something else a little further down, you've got the hair place, physical therapy, it's?
Little district.
Yeah, a few things going on there. So, okay, can the benefit be sought by some of the feasible method? Site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking places in the rear. Yeah, to get the spaces in the rear, you'd have to have driveway going down, the building shifted, and it gets more complicated. Is the variance substantial? It's not anticipated to be substantial given the improvement to the existing condition. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? This variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to the existing condition. Was this difficulty self-created? Yes, the proposed project, however, the proposed project is an improvement from the existing conditions. Any comments on this, on number four, the frontage built on Oak Street?
Yeah, I have a question, some clarification, I'm getting lost a little bit in the language here. It seems like there's two things working kind of together in tandem at the front here. The setback has to do with how far back the building is, the frontage is how wide the building is across that frontage, is that what?
Because it was, the planning board said that this was the Oak Street frontage here.
Okay.
The little kink and this belong to Arch Street. So per the urban regulations, this frontage here, 73 feet, you need to build out 90% of that with building to meet, that's a minimum, so.
But in order to do that, you'd lose some of the green space there.
Yes, you'd lose green space, yes, and here you can't do it because you have parking. We're not doing this right now, but on Oak Street, yes. So we're bringing the building for this 38 feet to the front property line.
Right, right.
So, we're attempting to get closer.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Kurt, for clarifying that.
All right, so number four, any further questions or anything?
I'm good.
Comments? All right, would anybody like to make a motion on this and approve it?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve variance number four for the minimum frontage.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Second, all right, any further comment? All right, all in favor of approving variance number four?
Aye.
Aye. All right, number five. Required minimum frontage buildout on Oak Street, urban regulations.
Mike, sorry, Mike, I don't want to, that should read Arch Street, though, we just did Oak Street.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So this should read Arch Street.
That's Arch, yeah, that's right, I thought something was right there.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Got to keep us on track.
Yeah, really.
We have two streets here.
Yeah, I don't know, two streets, it's pretty complicated. Yeah, I don't know, two streets, it's, it's pretty complicated.
Facing west or south?
Yeah. Required minimum frontage build on, on Arch Street, urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type one shop front slash mixed-use buildings diagram, a minimum of ninety percent frontage build out is required. The applicant proposes zero percent. Area variance criteria. Will variance result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Proposed development will not increase the site's existing non-conformance with this requirement. As such, it is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? To provide alternative locations, the entire site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a slightly different location. Due to the size of the property, the proposed building footprint, it may be difficult to locate a driveway in five parking spa- spaces in the rear. Is it substantial? The variance is not anticipated to be substantial given the existing condition. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to the existing conditions. Was it self-created? Yes, however, the proposed project is not increasing the non-conformance from the existing conditions. Okay, anybody comments on that or?
I'm good.
Everybody's all right?
Yeah.
Uh, would somebody like to make a motion to approve this? Five.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right, Tom makes a motion to approve it. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Kurt, I have one question.
Yep. Um, lighting on the site, on the site plan, what do you have on the site currently?
All we're going to do is we're actually providing lighting in the overhangs here and here. So it'll be kind of under the second floor, so there's no pole lighting or anything. There is existing street lighting out here that'll shine into this.
There is, there is a street light out there.
Yeah, right, right over across the street.
Because I know that, that corner, that corridor gets very dark at night and you got the bar there. And that would help this, as we're, you know, developing that district.
Right.
You say, per se.
Yeah, there's a light pole here and there's a light pole, uh, over, um, over here.
Okay.
And then this will all kind of glow at night underneath here, but not off-site.
Okay. And then that, and that, there's only one residential building next door, the brick
Yes.
building apartments, okay.
All right, number six, garden wall, urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type one shop front slash mixed-use buildings diagram, garden wall shall be built on frontage property lines in the absence of building walls. The applicant proposes no garden wall on Arch Street. All right, uh, variance criteria. Will the variance result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? The proposed development will not increase the site's existing non-conformance with this requirement. As such, it is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? To provide the garden wall on the Arch Street frontage of the property line, the entire site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a slightly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, it may be difficult to locate a driveway in five parking places in the rear. Is it substantial? The variance is not anticipated to be substantial given existing conditions. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? This variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to the existing condition. Was it self-created? Yes. However, however, the proposed project is not increasing the non-conformance from the existing condition. Anybody? Questions? Anything? Comments?
I mentioned before that I, I can see how the garden will be in the way of things. But one of the things I wanted to mention here is it, uh, is part of the bigger picture, Kurt, in this project. You've provided us with some images here with dark shingles, asphalt shingles specifically, uh, gray siding, white vinyl trim and half-red brick walls. I've looked in that area. It looks, this looks like it will definitely fit in with the character of the area. We have had some issues here with the ZBA with projects that take off and then change and don't quite fit.
Yes.
I, I think we should make it very important that with this last resolution, this last variance, before we vote on it, as well as the previous ones, that we are looking at this as how the building is going to look and that we expect that those things won't change and that these variances are based on this whole proposal, including how this is going to fit in with the neighborhood.
The applicant is also the one that developed the next-door property, the Seven Oak Street. So the intent is it'll have the same finishes then, so it'll feel like a larger building.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the intent of the whole thing, so.
So I just want to make sure that we have somehow embedded here, Michael, in whatever language we said, that there is a condition that these variances that we're purving tonight are based on this design that you're giving to us.
Those, are those, um, materials, are they part of the architectural guidelines?
Yes, and we submitted those to the plan, planning board and discussed them at the last meeting also.
I, I don't see, uh, things changing here. I, I know what you're saying.
We've, we've thought in the past that things wouldn't change either. I just want to make it clear to the applicants that what we're seeing is what we're getting and that there won't be any surprises for anybody here, residents are getting things more, much more complicated down the road.
Doesn't hurt to bring something up, you know?
So I just want to make sure that they, these are all going to be conditional based on our expectations.
All right, um, so the last variance, uh, how do you feel about that? Anybody like to make a motion, one or another?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve it? All right, thank you.
I'll, I'll second the motion to approve it with the conditions that we are expecting the building to look at as they are.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved. That's it. You got it, Kurt.
That was a lot of reading, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
How many variances are you at for the year?
He's trying for a world record.
I don't press my life. I don't take anything for granted, let me not, let me, so, um, yes, but I appreciate working together with the boards and.
Thank you, Kurt. You certainly have some constraints within this particular
Yeah.
Yes. Well, and that's what this board is for, to kind of look at things individually per lot and.
Figure out what's going to be best.
As long as we can kind of get towards the intent of what is supposed to be there, so. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Yep.
Do you adjourn?
Yes. Dave doesn't have to be here for the adjournment.
All right, uh, in that case, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion, Michael.
All right, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right. Good job.